One of the government code of Texas. This notice here back given to interested person in City of Odessa. City Council, City of Odessa, Texas, meeting a special council meeting on Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at one P M. I call this meeting to order. In the council chambers being on fifth floor, City Hall. Uh, it is one P M. We're gonna move into item two. Uh, City Council Benchmark Committee Discussion and Consider Benchmarks for the City Manager. Michael.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We will get right to it. So thank you all for being here. I know you have a really busy day. Uh, I promise to try to facilitate this as efficiently and effectively as possible. And I'm excited to work through this with you. So why are we here today? Um, we are here today to clarify priorities among all of you for the position of the new city manager. That is also going to provide clarity to that person once he or she is selected. This process helps to uh, remove um, hopefully, but definitely reduce personal bias. And again, this is that data-driven proven method that we're gonna work through. Um, these slides won't take me any time at all to get through, but it'll give you a good idea of what's coming. And uh, help us get through the session. So today, what our objective is, is by the end of this meeting, we will have the top four to five priorities that you all set for the city manager position to be successful. This is going to clarify what that vision of the councils is for the city manager position. Our interview questions will be based on what you create here today and also what you do at home. Uh, when you take the job quiz and we'll talk about that a little bit later on. The Tri-Metrics Assessment is based upon our work here today. And really, the litmus test that we're looking at for all of your priorities that you set is if that thing isn't accomplished, then the person in the role would fail. So that's kind of the litmus, the litmus test. We cannot mess this process up. Uh, it is, it is foolproof and I promise to guide us through. Um, I am hoping that this is not too much to ask. I know it's a pretty tight deadline. But if you all could by Thursday at eight thirty in the morning, have the job quiz completed, that would be amazing. Um, and it'll probably take you about thirty minutes to do. You're going to get an email here in just a little bit with a link to it, so you don't have to worry about typing in that link that you have there in your handout. Um, do protect that link. We have it set up only for the uh, six of you and Mr. Haney. But do protect that, that link. Uh, that is, that is important. That's why I don't have it in the PowerPoint presentation. Um, so do protect that. But if you could please get that done by eight thirty, yes, sir.
Was it Thursday, eight thirty A M. or P M.?
It is, it is A M.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thursday, eight thirty A M. That will let uh, Susie Price and us work together to get everything uh, completed. And then if it is possible for us to meet next week for our second and final meeting, that will allow us to review the benchmark. Um, so we'll take our work that we do here in the meeting today, combine that with the job quiz results. And if we need to make any uh, changes and ultimately get it approved, that will allow us to uh, potentially already have a draft of the city manager job description. And um, our work today plus what you do in the job quiz will allow us to put together the initial interview questions uh, and so on. So uh, we don't have to make that decision right now today, but that's the timeline that I'm, I'm trying to work with. Um, or we can go ahead and set that meeting today. That's entirely up to you.
Yeah, we have it on uh, item three to, to go and set that up.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. All right. So some ground rules, uh, and this thing called a parking lot. You remember last time when we met, I use this car analogy to describe kind of what we're doing. That's where the parking lot comes from. So we're gonna make decisions together, but there's also gonna be some individual work. Um, we'll try to have one conversation at a time and you know, uh, I went through this robes course many, many years ago and as we worked through these ideas, you had to say, I love you at the beginning of every statement before you could then offer a suggestion. Uh, so there was a lot of, I love yous, but uh, you know, you need to do, we need to do this differently or whatever. Let's try to be soft on people, but hard on ideas. So everybody's input is really, really important, but let's try to do that as, as best we can. Efficiency, I'm gonna keep us moving as best we, best we possibly can. And when you offer feedback about someone else's uh, idea, my recommendation is talk about any benefit that you see in that idea and then come up with their critique uh, next to that. That will help us have the most holistic overall discussion. And then the parking lot. So this is a place to keep us on task and save for later. Naturally, in these kinds of discussions, when we're talking about priorities, somebody may think of something and bring that up that might be a little bit off of what we're talking about now. What I'll do is say, would you mind if I put that in the parking lot? You'll see where that's at here in just a second. And then we'll come back to it and make sure that we have all those taken care of before the end. All right. Really quickly, these are two, there's two examples I'm gonna share with you of what a uh, benchmark process ultimately concludes with. So this is for a private sector C E O at a medium-sized business, nine hundred employees. So basically, the, the board or whoever that committee got together with uh, came up with these four priorities at the end of, of their session. So they wanna increase shareholder R O I. They wanna increase sales uh, by ten percent by this particular date. Um, which is super fast. Uh, decrease turnover at the V P level staff by one-third and so forth. So those were the priorities and they're ranked in priority order, okay? Then you notice that priority number three is that decreasing turnover of the V P level staff by one-third. And the board said that, okay, Mr. C E O, that's, that is probably going to be the thing that you're gonna spend the most actual time on week to week, okay? So we're gonna come up with three to five priorities and then we're also in ranked in order. And then we're also gonna identify which one of those the city manager will be spending their most time in. This is just another example on um, you know, a volunteer organization that has fifty full-time staff. They came up with three uh, major priorities. And then the most time is gonna be spent on that volunteer coordinator development, uh, which was priority number three. So I specifically used examples outside of city government so as to not influence uh, anything that you all might come up with. All right. So let's seize the day. Back to that car analogy, R P M. So those, those top three to five priorities that we're ultimately gonna create are crucial to the success of the city manager position. Said differently, if the city manager doesn't perform these three to five things that you all come up with, then that position would fail. In P, we're going to place. So how that's gonna work, each of you at your station have a stack of post-it notes. What I'm gonna ask you to do here in just a little bit, we're gonna take about five minutes. And I'd like for each of you individually to write down one per post-it note what your priorities are for the new city manager position. And then take your post-it notes and try to put them in rank order for you personally, okay? No cheating, no, no copying, uh, individual effort on that. So then what we're gonna do is we will start with uh, Mr. Mayor and then go from District One, District Two and so forth. And each of you are going to share what your top priority is. And we'll work through the line. Everybody will talk about their second priority and so forth. And we'll have this discussion. I'll be keeping track of all this on an Excel table that'll be up here in just a second. As we uh, start getting multiple priorities from each individual council member, there's gonna be some that are gonna be related, right? You are probably going to have some of the same priorities. So as we're going through this, you're gonna help me group them into like-topicked priorities. And you'll see how that's gonna work. Uh, once we complete all of that and we get everything done, we're gonna create a summary statement. So uh, again, not to use an example that would influence anything, but let's suppose the City of Odessa really wanted to concentrate on underwater, underwater basket weaving. And we had all these priorities related to that. We're gonna write a summary statement at the bottom of that, that is everything related to underwater, underwater basket weaving for the City of Odessa, okay? And that is what would wind up as number one on the second page of a handout that you got. That's our top priority of the council um, indicated. And then finally, we'll go through everything and say, okay, these are our top priorities, but which one is the C E O going to spend the most time on? And we've already talked about this. We'll come back to that on item three. So. If you would, go ahead and take that five minutes um, with your individual post-it notes and write down your individual priorities for the city manager position.
What do we do, three?
Three to five, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Need some music. Elevator music.
I have quite a wide variety. I could, could bring up. Everybody finished?
Yeah.
All right, outstanding. So remember, uh, this is a, a group process now. Uh, and the, the whole idea, you all are the, are the subject matter experts. And so now we're gonna bring all these ideas together and get this thing done. Mr. Mayor.
Item one, integrity. Communication.
The item one is just integrity by itself?
Integrity, yeah.
Okay.
Not gonna go into a lot of detail as far as uh, description and what that entails. Integrity basically is do the right thing when no one's looking.
All right, great.
Communication.
Hang on. So we're, we're just gonna, one, your first post-it note for all council members. Then we'll go into the second post-it note after that. Uh, anything else specific that you want to add to on the integrity piece?
No.
Okay. Other council members, uh, anything that you wanna add to or discuss about integrity as a priority for the city manager?
No, I do. The, I have integrity too, by the way. The um, the reason for that would be if you have experience or effective communication or all of these skills that are good for the position. Let's back it up. If you have skills, but you don't have integrity, then you, we don't have the personality type that we're looking for. That's why integrity would be so high.
Thank you, Mr. Connell. Ms. Swanner.
I also had integrity, but then I ended up having communication, communication skills.
Okay. Was integrity a priority by itself?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. So anything to add uh, to integrity other than what uh, Mr. Hoven and Mr. Connell have said?
Yeah, I think that integrity says it off. We don't have any integrity.
All right. Anyone else?
I may have used wording that, I didn't use the word integrity, but I said C M with high standards and ethics.
Okay.
Which may be another way of saying integrity.
It is, it is.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vasquez.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mata, your top priority, please.
Leader with the servant's heart.
Any council feedback on that? All right. Mr. Thompson.
Operate uh, his position and uh, be cognizant of the city charter and the way things are supposed to run, what his duties are. Make sure that he's clear about those. Or she.
Understood. Any council feedback on that one? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Okay, very good. Mr. Vasquez.
My priority, my top priority was uh, the C M bring, bring a three to five year of experience as a C M uh, in a like-size populated, population uh, as Odessa.
Yes, sir. Any council feedback on that?
Well, mostly as a rule, you always want a C M who has experience in two uh, uh, previous uh, cities. So it basically, you know, um. Yeah, that's, that's good.
Okay. Any other feedback? Very good. Mr. Canal, your top priority.
Are we on number two? I gave him up a one.
Uh, go ahead and say your top one again.
Integrity.
Integrity, okay. And did you have anything else additional other than what you, what I already got down over here?
Just to reiterate that that was just uh, tend them on.
Okay.
Most important with the integrity.
Understood. And Ms. uh, Swanner.
I had integrity also as number one.
My apologies. I somehow got the S on your name off. All right. Anything else to add for integrity? Okay, so it seems fairly reasonable to me that integrity is going to be one of our grouping areas. Uh, so I'm just gonna go ahead and list that here. That way, if we come to any more uh, of your individual priorities under integrity, I'm gonna start listing them down there. All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, we're back to you for your second priority.
Communication. Lots of communication open to uh, up uh, council. Let me back up. Uh, open a communication to council, unbiased communication to ban, to council. To um, mid-management and all staff members throughout the uh, the organization or the entity or the tax entity, how you wanna phrase it. All mid-manag, upper management, management and uh, entire staff within the city. The emphasis is unbiased communication.
All right, got it. Any council feedback on that?
I'd like to add along those lines, I may have, again, worded it somewhat differently. Um, a city manager not, uh, that would, would not hesitate to call to my attention as a councilman uh, anything wrong or unethical insofar as things that I may bring forth to his attention.
I wanna make sure I understand your statement correctly. Anything uh, wrong or unethical that you bring to the city manager?
If he, if he or she were to recognize that, that I may be out of order in a, in a matter that might be wrong insofar as maybe uh, the ordinances, uh, charter, whatever. Um, that kind of thing and not be afraid to uh, for fear of retribution that, you know, I'm a councilman. I'm his boss, you might say, cause he's one of the five, he or she is one of the five uh, positions that we, you know, hire and fire. I would not want a person, that person to be fearful. If I should, uh, if he, you know, if he should bring something to my attention that was either wrong or unethical and uh, and me take person, personal uh, feelings towards him for, him or her for it.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. So um, tell me if I might paraphrase this in a, in a good way. You want a city manager that has a strong ability to lead up.
There you go.
Is that right?
That's a good way of saying.
Okay.
You said it in less words than I did.
You were just speaking the music. Okay, cool. Any other feedback on that? All right, uh, Mr. Mata, or?
Yeah. Um, effective communicator.
Okay.
Which is different than a good communicator. Good communicator can just talk the B S, but effective is gonna actually say things and with the purpose. Some truth behind it.
Understood, got it. Any additions to that?
I also have communications that, which falls under that. I also put leadership. So if um, if they had the communication skills, that also falls into having leadership skills.
Okay. I think we may be identifying another grouping, which is very good. All right, Mr. Thompson, your second priority.
So uh, back to the operator of the city charter, that this person should be, should understand separation of powers and that we are a strong city manager government. And that this person be strong enough not to be intimidated by any member of the council uh, about the job that they're doing, whether it's hiring staff or whatever. That uh, that is his job or her job and uh, it's priority that that person be strong enough to keep that separation of powers.
Yes, sir. Any other feedback on that or additions? All right, uh, Mr. Vasquez, your number two.
C M to be visionary and an advocate for all employees.
Unbiased.
Thanks, sir. Any feedback?
I had that down as well. Somebody that's, I don't, I know I asked this question on first one on the council. Does every council end up being reactive to situations and why aren't they more proactive? So I'd like to see more proactivity looking down the line. Of course, I know councils change. There were four years, but, or over two years, but that's something I, I'd like to see more of. It seems like we're always playing catch-up, so the lack of city managers that can, that can lay out. We have all these studies, but it just doesn't seem like that anything ever gets completed. So that's just kind of where I'm at.
Mr. Thompson, I do not wanna put words in your mouth, but is your comment similar to the data that we found and presented from the assessment in terms of that being a leading uh, finding of really needing that common vision to outlast?
Mission statement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. Exactly.
I hope no typing teachers are grading while we're going through this. All right. Any other feedback or thoughts on that one?
So one of mine comes, goes with that with time management. So that kind of goes back with what Councilman Thompson talks about. We have all these surveys and strategies, but we don't seem to accomplish what we're supposed to be. So I think that falls into some of the time management and how you manage your time.
All right. Very good. Appreciate the discussion. Any other? Okay, Mr. Canal.
Uh, number two was servant leader. And that would be that everyone on the council, no matter what elections happen in the future, all department heads is a servant leader. He listens to all. He's not prejudiced to one particular group.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Ms. Swanner, your number two.
So they've kind of covered a lot of mine, but one, one that's not on there yet is self-motivated.
Anything to expand or elaborate on that?
Once um, the city manager that is self-motivated in the fact that he brings ideas, he's constantly looking at the betterment of Odessa or the city and what we can do to improve things. Instead of relying on. Instead of relying on a, a data-driven survey or waiting on a survey every time to, to decide that we need to move forward or bring something to us as council. He sees a need to motivate himself to say, this really needs to be fixed.
Did I get that accurate?
I can't see, but I'm sure you did.
Probably.
Consistently looking for better mental Odessa instead of relying on surveys or council to drive change and progress.
I see. Maybe I need glasses like you guys.
Well, man, I've got the bifocals, I've got the bifocals working here.
I can't even see the monitor.
Add, add short-term, long-term, uh, urban planning.
Thank you, yes.
Along that same lines, I think that, that if we went the direction, if that occurs, what Councilwoman Swanner's saying would also come to the, if we didn't do surveys and stuff, give us options to how we're gonna finance. It's always a problem. So, you know, I don't wanna have to go look for ways to finance something that I think the city manager should bring to us. Here's what we need to do, need to do this now. We don't need a survey. Here's how we're gonna pay for it. That kind of, that kind of leadership is what I'm looking for. 'Cause everything the city does costs a lot of money. Just because of the nature of the beast.
Uh, vision and needs need to be well researched and presented with a plan for financing? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it works.
Awesome. Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Experience. Experience in municipal, uh, uh, this will consist of a city charter. Stat, uh, statutory obligations, uh, by the, uh, city in collection of finances. Municipal management or something equivalent to in the private sector. In the sector of budgeting. Finance. And, uh, and, uh, HR. That's, that's a lot, but you know, the thing is, is that when we're talking about experience, there's huge experience, you know, there's, there's some, some crossover between private and public.
Certainly. Alright, thank you, sir. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Mata.
Encourage self-growth and education among the employees. Allow for training. Invest in the employees.
Thanks, sir.
I'd like to add on that one. Emphasis on continual education. And training up.
Got it.
Uh, also, that will allow advancement within, uh, within the, within the city of Odessa.
Mine kinda ties into all that. Time management with effective leadership, managing his or her teams.
Gotcha. Uh, did I hear maybe some thoughts about succession planning uh, from the two of you in that discussion?
Yes.
In terms of continuous training and looking for advancement within Odessa?
Yes, the thing is that we provide, uh, education and reimbursement for them. And so there's no point if we provide for that, if we don't have a pathway for them to advance within the organization. Both for, uh, men and women equitably. We need to see more females employed in a male-dominated department.
Okay. Uh, let's see here. I'm gonna parking lot that, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor. Alright. Any other comments on that? Okay, Mr. Thompson.
Uh, the, this new CM needs to, uh, we're very thin in the executive, what I call the executive branch, city manager and his, his direct assistant city managers and uh, this person needs to be able to, to pull together his own team. You finance development, you know, so, and I think that's very critical. And that we give him the latitude to pull his team together, not our team together, his team together. Because our responsibility is to look only to him.
Understood. Any discussion or feedback on that?
I agree with that. He or she, whatever the CM becomes, it is essential that the CM do an evaluation of all departments and, uh, determine and fill those, uh, fill those, uh, department heads, mid-management. I, well, let me put it this way, this, 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 cut it short. However they deem it's necessary, that works for them.
I'm sorry, could you?
It's, so basically is reiterating, uh, what Thompson said, is that a CM, whoever he or she may be, should have complete autonomy in filling out their management team. As they, as, as they see fit.
Got it. Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Vasquez.
Well, the last one I've written down. The, uh, CM hopefully would, uh, have membership in professional, uh, organizations that, that align themselves with city management. I understand that there may be some, uh, professional organizations that, uh, city managers belong to. Don't recall exactly the names. Also, a city manager that will effectively carry out the politi- policies as set forth by the council, but also effectively perform their job responsibilities as set forth in the job description that they hire under. And finally, of course, a city manager that will represent Odessa with dignity and professionalism.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Any discussion on that? Okay, Mr. Canal.
My third one is repeating again, but my third one was experience, CM experience, prior city experience, which is all encompassing.
Gotcha. Okay, anything else on that? And Ms. Swanner.
I think we covered all of mine. We got the communications, we got integrity. And we, we put a vision. Self-motivated leadership. And I, I too would like to see the CM have experience.
Okay, so at this point, does any council member have any more priorities, uh, written down that we have not somehow discussed at this point?
I got one more.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mata.
Promote fair and equitable growth for the city.
Okay. Any, uh, discussion on that promoting fair and equitable growth for the city?
Just, uh, everyone in the same playing field.
Okay. Any, anything there, uh, in terms of your priorities or expectations on, um, partnering with other organizations or anything like that?
Well, definitely, yeah. I think that, that'd be important in, uh, in growth is partnering with other organizations and, um, private, private establishments also.
Okay.
Public, private. That, yeah. Which, which, which basically, uh, promotes or contributes to the short-term, long-term mission statement of the city of Odessa once established.
Yeah.
Alright. Any other discussion on that? Okay, any other, uh, council members that have any priorities we have not discussed? Mr. Canal.
I have, uh, budgeting and, would be working with numbers. Like to be a number cruncher. Comfortable with numbers, but I'll put entitlement, budgeting.
Okay. Any, uh, comments or discussion?
No, it's just basically saying be able to read a financial statement.
Alright. Any others?
Well, I could add to that, 'cause I've got, I've got written down physical responsibility on the menu and where it's budgeted and how it's spent.
Uh, what was the very last thing you said?
Being responsible of how it's budgeted and spent. Physically responsible.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Um, what I'm gonna do, and Mr. Hany, if you're watching, this is in no way, shape or form bad to you, but I'm gonna delete your column, so we can make more room on the screen here. There we go. Okay. So now, uh, what I want to make sure that we do is group these up. And I'm gonna use some highlighting to put this together. So, um, back to top priorities. Did, is there overall consensus that integrity is, is an overall top priority for the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, let's highlight all of these that are related to integrity. Make sure we don't miss anything here. Y'all help me if you see something sticking out before I get there.
You're assuming we can read this.
I tried to make it as big as I can. Okay, so for integrity then, what we need to come up with is a, uh, summary statement of some kind. Anybody want to take a general stab at that?
Let's try this. This is something I have in my notes for integrity. I will act on the utmost integrity and pursue my work in an honest and ethical manner. I'll obey the letter. I will act with the utmost integrity. Pursue my work in an honest and ethical manner. I will obey the letter and the spirit of the law.
Okay.
So can we add to that? Lead by example? And lead from the front?
Okay.
I will take responsibility for my actions. Consider the effects on others. Strive to create a sustainable economic and social environment.
Okay. Um, would you agree with me that that is important, but not necessarily related to integrity?
Well, yes, I, I, I'll agree with that.
Okay, I'm gonna move that down here for just a second. wording's great, though.
What about strong moral principles?
Okay.
Denise going, what you're saying, I don't think you should try to write this, but I, I have always liked the cowboy coat. If it's not right, don't do it. If it's not true, don't say it. It's not yours, don't take it. That's integrity.
Okay. So I'll do some wordsmithing and so forth, but tell me if, if we've got down enough thoughts here to accurately summarize what your expectations are from, from an integrity standpoint. Council expects a city manager with strong integrity. If it's not right, don't do it. If it's not true, don't say it. If it's not yours, don't take it. The ability to do the right thing when no one is looking. Uh, and then, I will act with the utmost integrity, pursue my work in an honest and ethical manner. I will obey the letter in spirit of the law. I will lead by example and from the front. I will take responsibility for my actions and consider their effects on others.
That's man, if that doesn't hammer it home nothing well.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have consensus there?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
Alright. Uh, okay. Thoughts on the number two overall priority?
I see communication a lot. Effective communicator, unbiased. And also servant leader.
I would agree with that. There's, those two are pretty similar, uh, and that's, it's up to you.
So we're combining servant leader with what?
I don't know if they can, need to be combined. I think they're separate.
Okay.
I would agree.
So what, what, what are we on, servant leader?
We're, we're on, we're on the number two overall, uh, priority. So is that gonna be communications and everything related to communication skills, or is that gonna be servant leadership or something else?
I would, I would say servant leader, because that, that's gonna be tandem up for all those important skills on top. That's my opinion.
Other thoughts?
I'm fine with the, uh, either or. I'm fine with the servant leader being the second one.
Okay. So for everything related to servant leadership. Well, let's see, we'll do this, communication. That's communication. Am I missing any with servant leadership stuff, other than this one? Oh, here we go. Oh, here we go. Okay. Any other stabs or prepared statements on a servant leadership summary statement?
I'd like to add this one, this is a note that I have. Servant leadership, they're able to see the unique qualities and strengths of those that they lead and will nurture and create those strengths, create those strengths so that, so that individuals succeed.
Okay. Other thoughts on?
I think a servant leadership requires thinking about others, not yourself.
Putting the needs of others before yours, before one's, before one's needs.
Yeah.
The whole community.
Okay. Any other servant leadership summary statements? Okay. Communication and related skills. Talked a lot about overall unbiased communication, communication at all levels of the organization. So what I'm trying to do there is take what y'all said about, I think Mr. Moda, you said something about, you know, a little bit different than just a good communicator, but we're wanting to communicate and get things actually done. City managers should be able to communicate with all levels of the organizations and citizens in an unbiased manner. Communication should highlight the why and the how in order to keep progressing, progressing projects and initiatives forward. Anything else from a communication standpoint that you want?
I'm gonna add something on the, on the side of productivity. It is crucial, okay, the exchange of information between upper management employees in an organization is a vital part of the company's or organization's ability to remain productive and efficient.
Okay. Any other comments or additions there?
I think we're good.
Okay.
I think we've missed one thing, credentials. I'm, I'm sorry, I just now thought about that, but the person that takes this job besides the fact of experience, you know, city our size, but he, he or she should have a at minimum a bachelor's, probably a master's in public administration and be familiar with working with a T M L. I think that's important, and I don't know if this-
Does that go along with the, with the, because I was gonna say the next one would probably be experience?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, but it's credentials, yeah.
Experience and credentials, yeah.
Experience and credentials, maybe those go together.
Yeah, those are, those are the, sort of the baseline things, right? Where, would you remember the car, and that's, that's where the car is parked? And the roads that they've traveled, where they've been from? So no issues on, on including that from a, I, I think what you're specifically talking about right now, Mr. Thompson, might be, you know, minimal qualifications.
Right.
Okay. So let's put that down here and-
Parking lot, yeah. I thought that's where you put it.
We, we will get there and get that done before we get out of here. Okay. The things that I'm seeing that we still haven't necessarily covered yet are, are this whole notion of, of creating the vision. This, this forward-looking piece, that may be something that you want as a top priority. And then also the experience piece is probably the other one that's been most mentioned, although budgeting got a lot of discussion as well, so.
I think the budgeting and all that will go into the parking lot with the, you know, the, the basics of the qualifications. We can put in the financing, the budgeting, understanding the financial statements, things of that nature. Things that are, you know, the charters, statutory obligations.
That would fall under experience.
Yeah. That all can go in the parking lot. I think the, the urban planning, the mission statement, I think that's a priority because it's one thing that we're, are putting on the new C M to come up with a unifying mission statement that gets all thirty departments going in one direction instead of thirty different directions.
In my opinion, or my recommendation, if you utilize a lot of that experience stuff and the minimal qualifications, that's going to help identify overall competencies. But your key piece for priorities really ought to be about how is that person gonna translate that experience and where they've been into where we want them to go. So I would, I would personally suggest making that, that vision piece, getting everybody in the right seats, rowing in the same direction, a top priority, and we can work through the the minimal qualifications and so forth, which is important for the job description as well. Are we good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
City of Odessa is still seeking what's, what's gonna be its identity when they grow up. So we were hatched in nineteen twenty-seven.
Okay. I'm just gonna call that vision and mission alignment for now. Okay, so comments about not being as reactive, being more proactive. All right. Any other top priorities? Are we feeling confident about these?
So did we just put in the parking lot the experience and the credentials, or is it?
We, we did, and, and as soon as, unless there's any other top priorities that we have, that's where we're going next, and that's our last thing.
Okay, where, where do we put team building, staff, in other words? I thought we talked about-
Yeah, the education and trainings and self-promote, promoting from within.
The city new C M, he or she, you know, building their own teams and filling assistant city manager jobs. I mean, that, I just think that's really important. It's something they need to do quickly. In my opinion, that's, is causing us, not that the people that are here doing what they're doing are not doing a good job, it's just that, you know, need some experience in those positions, especially finance. And I think Larry and Jeff did a good job, but they're overwhelmed too. You know, something else, Mike, I just thought about too, that, I don't know if you wanna put it in the parking lot or whatever, but, you know, I want a C M that tells me how we can get things done, not why we can't get them done. I think that kinda goes back to giving us options and ways to finance, you know, and pay for it, but maybe it's the same thing, I don't know. I don't even know if it makes any sense or not.
I added that under vision and mission alignment for that summary statement. And again, I'll, I'll wordsmith and fix these, and then you all will certainly have the opportunity to review that and make any revisions at next meeting. Under, so I titled this training and personnel development. City managers should be confident in building their own executive teams. City managers shall ensure staff at all levels have the required training, as well as training to assist them in growing in their positions and service to citizens. City managers shall facilitate succession planning. Does that capture what y'all want?
That'd be good.
That's good.
Okay. All right, parking lot. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned diversity, specifically trying to get more female staff on board. From even a qualification or a job duties standpoint, we could talk about recruiting experience, recruiting initiatives. Diversity training is obviously something that would be under training in personnel development. What, what other direction, or do we wanna go there?
Well, I mean, the city has to be, look, look like an equal opportunity employer. And the thing is, is that predominantly not just city of Odessa, but municipal and county and at all levels is a male-dominated fields. And so you, you can count female mid, low to mid-level management in one hand. So I don't think we've been able to communicate that we're an equal opportunity employer for all. And we need to get to a point where we're comfortable in seeing females in a leadership role of male-dominated fields. We're seeing, you know, this was all started with the military. You know, the thing is, when you look at the military, a lot of things that we see in the corporate world started in the military. Females in combat. You know, you start seeing the type of you know, type of lead, I mean, there, there's a lot of financial benefits that, that's put in the, in the, in the private field. We're still lacking in the municipalities. If we saw something that came across on the study is that we're, there was a statement there about, I had to ask the clarification with that statement. And what it came across to me is that we're still not comfortable with having females apply or try to hold positions to male-dominated. I don't know how we get there, but I know it's something that we have to address. We can't just, we just can't have a, a mission statement and go in a direction without really being real and seeing those and giving people in you know, I, I guess it's, there's certain classes, right? I guess female is one of those, protected class.
Yes, sir, you're referring to protected classes.
Yeah.
I think that really what, what, a lot of what you're saying boils down to is a couple of things. One, it's that integrity and leading from the front that you all said. It's servant leadership in action and making sure that all employees are heard and understood and valued. It's training.
Training.
A big component is training.
One of the things is that we have a lot of people doing their own training, and we're not doing it as an organization.
Okay.
We're budgeting for it, but we're, we're not, there wasn't an execution of it.
Okay. Ensure that Odessa is seen as an equal opportunity employer. Ensure all former leaders of diversity training and promotional processes are fair. Add this, and I'm gonna put diverse perspectives are appreciated. That's, that's not an affirmative action stand, statement. That's literally a, we appreciate differences of all kinds coming to the table because then most of the time we can make a better decision if we have lots of thoughts and perspectives, just like we're doing right now. Does that fairly accurately?
Yes.
Get that? Okay, cool.
We have about, we, we, we need a brighter, a broader scale of that perspective to come in.
Okay. Strive to create a sustainable economic and social environment. What unfinished business do we have related to that?
Are we talking as far as projects?
I'm talking about as far as this. Have we covered everything that that comment was made to in relation to the priorities? And we're about to get into the minimal qualifications and credentials.
Yeah, that was in the communications. Strive to create a suitable economic and social environment. Economic environment is basically is be able to disseminate, discernment in what is is helping the city or working against the city. This is some, this is a model that has existed in city Odessa for over forty years. So one thing has been sustainable is that we've been maintaining an unbalanced of how we do our ad, adverum. You know, and so the only thing that's been constant has been the administration. And so we've had a forty years consistent of of how we wind up doing benefits to lower, mid, and upper developers. And so trying to get all that put together, and that's what I meant by sustainable economic and social environment. The economic environment right here has an imbalance. We, we don't have competitive practices. We're picking, choosing winners and losers, and this is through policy. I don't know how we wind up addressing that in the short term. But it definitely is helping and hurting the city because we stay stagnant. The question is, is that the percentage of adverum that pays for fire and, and police, that needle hasn't moved. We know now, we have, we have an opinion of what, what's causing that. So we have to strive to create a policy that allows the city to be sustainable in its tax base, and that is by leveling the paleon field. We need the C M to be able to help us assist in understanding you know, the, the policies as the city council develops those, with along with the city manager and the business community to be able to address their needs, but also address the needs of the, of the public and maintaining its responsibilities of fire and police and sewer and water, things of that nature. Safety and infrastructure. The city is created to, to deliver services, those basic services.
Okay. What's helping and hurting the city? City managers should be able to analyze and recommend economic and social policies that will move Odessa forward equitably and ensure that safety and infrastructure remain on track. I'll find a better way to say that. Does that accurately capture what you were trying to say?
That's close.
Okay.
I think we have a lot of great intangibles here, which are very, they're the most important. But I think we still need to have, maybe in the statement six, put, make it the, the minimal qualifications and credentials.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't there need to be like a baseline of what they actually have to have? I mean, they can have all of these, but if they're not how the minimum qualifications, then.
Yes, sir. The minimum qualifications, which is literally what we're gonna do next, that's like the, like when you read a, a job posting, it's the minimum qualifications that are on there. So that's the, kinda the gatekeeper that will catch through the resume review and so on. It, it's, but it's not one of your top priorities for this position.
I got you.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hovindor, any other council members, anything else you want me to try to clarify here for incorporation into the job description? On the sustainable economic and social environment? Or is that? Or is that decently adequate?
I think it's okay.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Thompson, minimal qualifications and credentials.
Oh, I, I guess minimal, I, I would think it'd have to be a master's in public administration, but maybe a bachelor's is enough, but with the, with the, I think depending on the experience. Uh, you know, at some point, whether it's a bachelor's or a master, it may or may not make a difference if they have enough experience. But I'd be more comfortable with a master's in public administration personally.
And that's being used for the gatekeeper, so that's just, it's important.
That's minimal qualifications, in my opinion. You give, you know, the city, a city this size now and growing all the time, I think it's very important that we have people that totally understand public administration under a home real city and this type of government we have in the city.
Okay, so I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing, uh, two levels of education, bachelor's level education, master's level education, and I'm also hearing a very specific, area of study, public administration. So, council as a whole, other feedback, is that, what, what do you want to put there as your gatekeeper? Because that's what's gonna be, if, if somebody doesn't meet the minimal qualifications, that's it, so.
So, in, in adding, I understand in adding that, but, you know, uh, you don't see a lot of people that go into public administration in a master, bachelor's or a master's. So, in doing so, you can add that in, but it's going to reduce.
Mm-hmm.
Tremendously. From my experience.
Masters in business would be broader.
To, uh, when, when Jerry McGuire had been hired in nineteen ninety, he was the only city manager of that time that held a business administration, a master's in business administration. No one prior to him had ever had that, uh, qualification. And so I go back to that experience, it, it really pigeonholed it, um, and so.
Is there consensus right now that all of you want to have a four-year college degree at the bachelor level?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay. Do you want to have a master's requirement?
Well, I mean, I'd like to make it as narrow as possible, I just don't, I don't want, I don't want to throw darts at a board to help to get somebody to apply.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that if you get somebody with, with, you know, I understand that, but, you know, just remember that you, we will wind up having that, that people applying was gonna get really narrow. And so, um, just, I'm just, it's just, it's just a caution.
I think there's more people graduating with public administration degrees today than you think there are.
Yeah, but not, but, but not in municipalities.
Yeah, not in municipalities.
Maybe a compromising statement might be, of course, the bachelor's would be the minimum. And, and you could all, maybe consider something like, uh, masters preferred, does that make sense?
What do you want, I think what he's asking, do you want masters, do you want that, uh, to be just a masters in, uh, public administration? Or, or masters in, would it masters in business?
Masters in business.
Be good also, would that be, would that be sufficient? Or masters in, you know, finance or?
I don't know. For me, it's.
I don't think you have to choose, you could isolate three and choose, you know. I'm saying broaden it a little bit, don't pigeonhole it, broaden it. And, and then once you start getting the applications, then you can go from there. If, if we do it from the get-go, man, that, that pole's gonna get really narrow, real small, real quick.
Yeah, I don't think we want it to get narrow.
Do you still think business administration and public, what y'all's experience about public administration, people out there?
My degrees, my degrees are in psychology. Uh, I have a bachelor's in psych, a master's in psych. It's funny, when people would, you know, ask me, I wanna go in, I wanna be a police officer, or I wanna do whatever. My recommendation to them is to get a degree in anything other than criminal justice, because we'll teach you all the criminal justice you need to know. But we won't teach you accounting, or psychology, or sociology, or whatever. Education hugely important, it adds to that diverse element, different ways of thinking. It, I am, I have not seen very many city manager positions that have a specific, uh, degree, area of study delineated. There will be a minimum level of education, and then it will say something like, in public administration, business administration, or a related degree.
Yeah.
That's typically how those are stated.
That makes, that makes sense.
That's why if we broaden it, if he hits, he or she hits one, okay, that's a candidate. Yeah, but if we broad, and if we, if, if we narrow it, and they don't hit anyone, we may be kicking out some qualified people.
I'm not applying for the Odessa city manager position. My master's is in psychology with a minor emphasis in management. So, you know, but, but it says on my diploma, MS in psychology. So if you put that, a, a person like me would be excluded from being able to move forward in the process.
Yeah. So I said, uh.
Okay, so.
The more we can broaden in some, some areas, they hit one, uh, one out of four, one out of five.
Bachelor's degree in public administration or a related area. Okay, from an experience standpoint, what are you looking at there for your minimal qualifications? Usually this is a number of years and it's in fields, so think about that.
I would say three to five years.
Of?
You're talking, okay, three to five years and, uh, as a city manager, department head?
Assistant city manager or department head.
That's a good range, three to five years. Uh, one of the criterias to the TML is that any CM would have to have prior experience in, uh, at least a minimum of two cities. That way you have, uh, a little more diverse, seeing one city, how they do things versus another. And so, I like, you know, so.
Well, but back to your question about broadening it, what if you had, what if you had an assistant city manager somewhere that'd been in that, in that role for six years? Now you just kick him out.
Well, it's not about.
Because it has, doesn't have two cities, he only has one.
Didn't, didn't say that, you know, you could, you could hint at two, two, two cities, it's just, I'm telling you what the TML said. The TML basically, because you want someone that be able to, uh, uh, addressed to the TML. TML says basically is preferred, there's not, it's a recommendation, it's just saying a preference that when you're looking at it, you wanna see a city manager have had, or an applicant that has worked in minimum of two, two other cities. I'm just telling you what TML's saying, not me. And so, um, we can, you can do three to five years' experience, you can do one city, you know, you can do whatever, but we can do whatever we want. Just throwing out a preference of what I've heard and seen in my experience, that you, this is what you wanna see, you wanna see a diversity. Diversity doesn't come from working in one, in one municipality. And you can combine it with private, you know, and so the, the, the book is open for us to write. And so, we can, you can do the three to five cities, you can do one city, you can do assistant city manager, uh, assistant, uh, department head, what department head that, that, that's gonna be. You can arrange it for a smaller city, because if you do a smaller city, a city of Odessa is a move up. Uh, do you want to do a city larger of a hundred, of two hundred thousand? You know, I don't know, whatever we wanna put in, in those, uh, minimal qualifications.
I like what Ms. Swanner said earlier, when she combined it, uh, three to five years' minimum experience as a city manager and or department head. I think that opens it, it broadens it.
And the only clarified question I've got, do you, do you wanna add any size, um, requirements on there, so like a, a city of at least X amount, or, um, and then the other piece that I would attach to that, or similar, uh, private sector management experience? If you're open to that.
Like employee size, employee size.
Or employee size of an organization, yeah, that you could say that, uh, or, or similar role with an organization size of.
Thousand people.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Thousand people.
Uh, okay, you currently have eight hundred and ninety-one employees, just.
Filled.
Filled, yes, sir.
I think there's, I mean.
There are over a thousand authorized positions.
If we're fully staffed, I'm just saying.
Yep. Consensus?
What was that? Do we have eight hundred and ninety-one employees currently, positions filled, or?
Right, yes, sir.
Okay, and how many positions total?
About a thousand.
That mass exodus that been occurring the last three months. I say a thou, uh, uh, equivalent of a thousand employees. I don't wanna limit it, I mean, do we do fifty thousand? Public, uh, City of Public Area fifty thousand up to three hundred and fifty thousand? I don't know if somebody from half a million would come, would come to Odessa. I don't care, I don't think you get the spouse here.
Yeah. Like I keep saying, at night, it'd be gone by daylight.
But we want to sell Odessa, we want people that are applying knowing they're coming to Odessa.
And they're gonna stay.
And that way, we, 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 well, we don't want to ensure so, so we try to stay, but.
But I don't want to. But I think that, I think that somebody, if you go down to fifty thousand, then that person hasn't experienced growth like we're going through now. We've gotta have somebody that's, that's had that kind of experience.
We can do a hundred thousand.
So I, that's my, that's my recommendation.
So do a hundred thousand up to?
Up to whatever.
Okay.
About a hundred thousand?
Do you wanna add that, carry out, that Mike has said about, uh, private, um?
That's for you all to decide.
Private industry?
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea also.
That's manage a thousand, a thousand employees.
And I'll give you a perfect example of that, is that we got, twenty-nine years ago, we got Darryl Wells from the private sector. And he was, was a terrific risk manager because he didn't need any help. I mean, he, the city flourished under his leadership in risk managing, in manag, managing those, those, in my opinion, from what I saw. So, I think.
My recommendation then is, mo, most cities are not gonna have a thousand people of employees unless they have a population that's commensurate to go with it. Uh, and private sector folks don't work, they, they don't have population measures. They have employee measures, which you have on here, so I wouldn't necessarily put the population piece in there as a minimum requirement. Recommendation.
Okay.
Any other minimal qualifications that you wanna discuss?
Impervious to wind.
Okay, so here's a good question. Do we want to do a national search or a Texas search?
Texas.
Texas.
I prefer Texas, that way they know where Odessa, Texas is.
Yeah, they do.
They pretty much heard about it, good or bad, they heard, they've heard about it.
Yeah, I think Texas.
So Texas search.
They know Texas law, they'll have an idea of what, they know what the state's about.
Yeah. Mayor, our, that, mayor, it's background investigation's done prior to the actual hire though.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
All that, they don't have to be done.
All right, anything else? Thank you all very much for your work. You should have all received the email for the job quiz, uh, with the link in it. Remember, that's due by Thursday, eight-thirty in the morning, and then, um, with your permission, are we able to move on to scheduling that other meeting?
Yes, so we're gonna move on to item three for, uh, item three is to discuss and consider next meeting date for benchmark committee. Are we look, we're looking for next week, are we not?
That would be my recommendation, yes, sir.
Everybody check their schedules.
And can we do three in the afternoon? I have a meeting at six on the twenty-first, this Tuesday, the twenty-first. Is that what your goal is, to be here in a week?
Okay. Uh, we have a recommendation for the twenty-first, any objections? What time are you, do you say?
Three o'clock, three o'clock will work for me.
Three. Yeah, I've got a, I've got an NPO meeting at one thirty, but it's an hour, and that won't last an hour and a half. So I mean, it's kinda tight. Don't we have council that day?
Not that evening, no.
No, the twenty-fourth.
Okay, that's, oh, okay.
Twenty-four, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, I'm sorry, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, not two weeks from today.
Yeah, two weeks from today.
See, that's all, that's my old calendar, okay, that's good. Yeah, I just got NPO that day, so it's, I'm okay.
That's good.
Okay.
I have, do I have, I have, uh, I have a motion for the next benchmark committee, Tuesday, the twenty-first, three P M, Fifth Floor City Council. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, I have a second by, uh, Councilmember Mata, all in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay, motion passed, unanimous. Seeing that there's no more business before the city council and the special city council meeting, I have a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Councilmember Swanner, second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay, motion passed, unanimous. We are adjourned. See you back in thirty minutes.
Thank you all.